Hi and welcome to the ninth session of our study of Ephesians. Let's begin with just brief prayer. Again, Lord, we thank you for the word you have given us, and pray that your Spirit may illuminate its meaning for us, that we may be more perfectly your children through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. I'd like for you to suppose that you had the task of writing an honest appraisal about Christianity as you know it. That is, you had to write down all the things that make you proud and the things that make you blush or that make you even cringe, based on whatever knowledge that you now have. Well, if I were to do that, I could give numerous examples of things that make me proud. For example, Christians that I have known who clearly exhibit the righteousness of God, who lead godly lives that are to be admired. People who have made great sacrifices, such as the doctors who forego a profitable practice in our country in order to become a medical missionary. I'm proud of all of the things that I see people doing for each other, clearly caring about each other. I'm proud of all the colleges and hospitals that I see around that were begun, and believe me, a substantial proportion of them, were founded by Christians who wanted to enhance the quality of our lives. On the other hand, there are reasons to blush or even to react with despair or with disgust. After all, we all are, I'm sure, familiar with the fact that you go back through history and you see how many Christians have been literally killed by other Christians because they each thought that the other were heretics. It's almost inconceivable to us today that you would kill somebody else simply because that person didn't share particular theological beliefs that you have. But it's happened. And of course, there are many other things that have gone on in the church that make me blush or about which I feel repugnant. But I think that the passage that we're going to study today talks about another of our reasons to blush. And it isn't because, it's such a heinous thing in a way, rather, this passage talks about our most, what I think is one of our more flagrant failures as Christians. And that is, it talks about what should be but which clearly isn't. And what should be is what Jesus prayed for in that beautiful chapter of John, the 17th chapter, the great prayer before the arrest. And at the very heart of that prayer was his request that all of his followers should be united. There should be a unity among those who carry his name. Now, the theme of the passage today is that salvation breaks down all these human visions that we've just been talking about. Unfortunately, not only has it not happened that we have overcome all of our divisions and hostilities, but in some cases, people have acted in a way to make them even worse or to enhance them. Let's see what this passage has to say. It's the second chapter of Ephesians. We're going to be looking at verses 11 through 22 today. Verse 11. Therefore, remember that formerly you who are Gentiles by birth and called uncircumcised by those who call themselves the circumcision, that done in the body by the hands of men. So first of all, Paul says to think about your status before the time of Christ. Gentiles were thrown into that category of the uncircumcised by those who called themselves the circumcision. In brief, what that means is that the Jews distinguished themselves from Gentiles, and Gentiles, of course, being everybody who isn't a Jew, and placed themselves above the Gentiles, which of course is just one example of what people everywhere in the world did and do to this very day. You divide the world into categories of them and us, and us is always better than them. For example, in ancient Persia, they had a rule. If you wanted to become a doctor, you had to practice on non-Persians first. And if they didn't die, then you could practice on Persians. Well, you couldn't find a better example anywhere of people who believed that they themselves were better than anybody else and deserved the very best of care. And the interesting thing is that the divisions that we have are typically based upon circumstances that are beyond our control. We divide people up according to their race, for example. Well, who chooses the race they're going to be? Or their nationality? Who chooses the nationality that they're going to be? Or the financial status of their family? We are born into these categories. We didn't choose them, we just had them given to us. And yet, we then use them to castigate some people and portray them as inferior to others. So you get humankind becoming a mass of mutually scornful, competing, and sometimes warring groups. That is not a reflection of God's will. In fact, it's a glaring contradiction between what should be and what is. And so reminds me of a sign in an English hotel which said, "Please do not wait to be introduced to your fellow guests. We are all one big family. Do not leave valuables in your room." Well, I guess that the family member could steal something from you. But when Paul calls circumcision, quote, "that done in the body by the hands of men," what he's stressing is what we've just been talking about. This categorization of humans into superior and inferior groups. And it is a creation of humans, not of God. And this also reminds us of what Paul told people in Romans and what Jeremiah told people. That circumcision, which is a symbol of dedication to God and of being incorporated into the family of God, must be of the heart and not simply of the body. Now, it goes on in verse 12 to note three ways in which Gentiles were disadvantaged before they became Christians. Remember that at that time, he said, "You were separate from Christ, excluded from citizenship in Israel, and foreigners to the covenant of the promise, without hope and without God in the world." Note these three ways. First of all, he says that they were separate from Christ, which is just a way of saying they had no hope in a Messiah. Otherwise, he's saying the obvious. Before you came to Christ, you were apart from Christ. Well, obviously. But now, the point is, they had no Messiah. The second thing is, they were excluded from citizenship in Israel. They were foreigners to the covenants of the promise. They were aliens, without any of the rights and privileges of citizens, including the right to claim the promises that God had given in the covenants. By the way, that's an interesting point right there. Covenant here is plural. And the only other time that that occurs in the New Testament is in Romans, the ninth chapter. No doubt, Paul here is alluding to the covenants that God made with various people, including Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, David. He's talking about a series of covenants. And these covenants all reflected God's faithfulness to his promises, his faithfulness in fulfilling what he said he would do, that he would bless his people and that he would make his people a blessing to the world. That was not done among the Gentiles before Christ. The third thing is, they were without hope and without God in the world. Now, obviously, Gentiles can have some kind of hope also, and they did have some hope. But for all practical purposes, it was not the kind of hope that we really need because they did not have a hope based upon the coming Messiah and God's action to bring history to its culmination in Christ. Well, Jesus has changed all of that. Verse 13. But now in Christ Jesus, you who once were far away have been brought near through the blood of Christ. Now, to speak about those who are gods and those who are not as those who are far or near was actually common in the Jews. And they're not talking about being closer to God. To say near to God was a Jewish way of saying to be a part of the family of God. So Jesus brought us here to where our hearts have always longed to go, right into the household of God. And you can appreciate perhaps the magnitude of this more if you've ever experienced being lost somewhere and having someone guide you to where you want to go. This happened to us once when we were on vacation in Switzerland. And we were in French Switzerland. We came, we were driving. We came to a place in the road where there was a barrier. And clearly, the road was closed from that point on. There was something in French, and I speak almost no French. So I had no idea what the sign said, but I knew that the road was closed. And I did not know how to get where we wanted to go by an alternative route. So I did remember that there was a shop that we had passed a short way back down the road we were on. So I went back to that shop, walked into it. The owner was there, there was another customer there. I tried to talk to the owner. He didn't know English. And he tried to talk to me, and I didn't know French. He could also speak Italian, but I can't speak Italian. I could also speak German, but he couldn't speak German. The irony of that really struck me, how you have two people with four different languages and they can't understand a word that the other one is saying. Fortunately, the customer who was there did speak German. And so he told us to follow him, and he would show us the way to go. So we went out in the car, followed him down the road for a number of miles. And then he got to a certain point, and he pulled over, and he signaled with his hand like this, which was a way of saying, "Just stay on this road, keep going this way." So we passed on. And in my rearview mirror, I could see him make a U-turn and go back. And then suddenly, I realized what he had done. I had thought that he was just going to the same place we wanted to go, so all we had to do was follow him. But no, it turned out that he went miles out of his way in order to help us to get where we wanted to be. Now, I just had a, I felt wonderfully grateful to him for doing that. Wish I could have expressed it in person. Well, actually, it's a sort of kind of thing that Paul is talking about here, that Jesus has led us where we wanted to be. We couldn't get there on our own. But he has led us to where we wanted to be. In verses 14 to 18 now, he makes, Paul makes the case that Jews and Gentiles should become one body in Christ. And he says Jews and Gentiles, but obviously, he means that all people who are in Christ should be one. This is in verses 14 through 16. For he himself is our peace, who has made the two one and has destroyed the barrier, the dividing wall of hostility, by abolishing in his flesh the law with its commandments and regulations. His purpose was to create in himself one new man out of two, thus making peace. And in this one body, to reconcile both of them to God through the cross, by which he put to death their hostility. So Jesus is our peace. Whatever antagonisms, whatever hostility, whatever traditional barriers exist between people, they break down in the face of the peace that Jesus makes between us. As he says, he destroyed the barrier, the dividing wall of hostility. What does that mean? Well, it's anything that separates people from each other. Listen to Peterson's translation. "He tore down the wall we used to keep each other at a distance." Well, we're all familiar with how distasteful walls can be. Perhaps one of the more notable ones in modern day was the infamous wall in Berlin that cut off the communist sector from everybody else. You may recall seeing the pictures of the joy of people when they brought that wall down and were able to go back and forth once again. And I'm sure that you're like me, and you feel this wall now in the form of the virus, the COVID-19, which in effect becomes a wall that keeps us from interacting with each other the way we would prefer. What Paul is talking about specifically in this passage, however, is the law. The law was this kind of wall because the Jews thought that the law made them unique, made them better than anybody else. They cherished it, they despised anyone who did not follow the law. But Paul says, no, the law has just become a barrier. What you must do is to transcend all barriers and be at one with each other. So we're talking about trying to create people who can still be different, but who accept each other's differences. That's the only way, and that means that we treat each other as equals. That's the only way to break down the hostility. I've often said to people, and sometimes I don't like it when I say this, but I say, "We should not think of ourselves, first of all, as Jews or Gentiles or even as Americans. First of all, we should think of ourselves as Christians." And then we can go on from there. Because if we think of ourselves, first of all, as Christians, we can break down this hostility. There are a number of historical examples that illustrate how hostility can persist for a very long time. You may recall Yugoslavia and what happened after the breakup. We learned the hard way that putting Serbs and Croats and Muslims into one nation did not resolve the traditional hostilities that existed. The same thing has happened in a number of African nations where they arbitrarily put different tribes into one nation. You don't create unity that way. We have to transcend these human categories, and then we can achieve true peace. Well, I want to be realistic here. I say that we can do this, and Jesus can make this possible. But not necessarily that he will make this possible. I'm sure that the Lord is at work to do it. But I'm also painfully aware of how the church has often failed at this. There's some good examples of people. I'll give you one at the very end today. Of people who have transcended this. But there's all too many examples of how people retain these traditional antagonisms and hostilities. But it's God's purpose for us to be one. And this has always been his purpose for us, as Paul says in verses 17 and 18. "He came and preached peace to you who were far away and peace to those who were near; for through him we both have access to the Father by one Spirit." The same offer was made to all, peace with God, and that means or should mean peace with each other. Well, what are the consequences of this? Well, in theory, at any rate, or ideally, at any rate, Paul spells them out in verses 19 through 22. This is verse 19. "Consequently, you are no longer foreigners and aliens, but fellow citizens with God's people and members of God's household." Note this terminology here. We're talking about no distinctions. And that's a beautiful picture. What he's saying is, there are no foreigners in God's kingdom, no aliens. I don't know if you've ever had the experience of feeling like you were a foreigner somewhere. It's not a very pleasant thing. I have to tell you that I have often loved going to Canada. Well, I've always loved going to Canada, various parts. We've been in most of the areas of Canada. And you know, if I were to live somewhere else or want to be part of another nation, I think I would choose Canada. But even so, when I was there, I always still felt like a foreigner, felt like an alien. And even when people are very accepting and people are very warm, you know, that's good. But you still have just that little feeling of being a foreigner or an alien. And it's not a good feeling at all. It's not the kind of thing you want to have. So I like this picture that he's presenting here. In God's kingdom, there are no foreigners, there are no aliens. Now, okay, note that we're moving from, in this passage, from the metaphor of citizenship, and that's the foreigner or the alien, to that of the family. He goes on to the members of God's household, which is also a beautiful picture. And my family makes me appreciate it intensely because I know that no matter what happens to me in this world, no matter how badly I mess up, I can always go home, and my wife Jeanette is there to welcome me, to accept me, to love me. At least she has been so far. So to me, though, really, this is something which is just a treasure, you know? To know that there's someone, some other human, that you can totally rely on, you can trust implicitly, someone who will always be there for you. And the same thing is true, of course, in my other home, the home of my Lord. There are no aliens there, definitely. And then Paul moves to the metaphor of a building or temple in verses 20 to 22. He says that we were built on the foundation of the apostles and prophets with Christ Jesus himself as the chief cornerstone. In him, the whole building is joined together and rises to become a holy temple in the Lord. So we're now at the image of a building. And this is in accord with the vision of Isaiah in the Old Testament. It talked about this kind of thing that, well, as he said, "I will bring my holy mountain, give them joy in my house of prayer; for my house will be called a house of prayer for all nations." Now, I want to take just a little time to explore the meaning of all this because this is what the church was meant to be. It's not what the church necessarily always is. First of all, what about, what does it take? What does it mean to have unity in Christ? Does that mean uniformity of belief? What if we have differing somewhat beliefs or differing forms of worship? Does that mean that we have violated this ideal? Well, I would say, no. Keep in mind these metaphors, they're very important. We talk about the metaphor of being citizen. Are all citizens alike? No, obviously. We talk about the family. Are all family members alike? Well, no, clearly. What about the stones or bricks in a building? Are they all alike? No, not even the stones are all alike. So you don't have to be precisely like someone else in order to be bonded together in unity or to affirm equality. As a matter of fact, if we were all like that, everybody just a clone of everybody else, it would be a mighty boring world. The second thing is, what exactly is the bond that is to keep us united? Well, clearly, it is Jesus Christ, the cornerstone. In him, we are being built together to be God's dwelling. We've too often have forgotten that and the importance of it. It seems to me that one of the implications of this passage is that the beginning of unity is the affirmation of Jesus as Lord. If you are able to say for yourself, "Jesus is Lord", and I am able to say for myself, "Jesus is Lord", that makes us one in Christ and says we are part of the same family of God. The unfortunate thing is that all too often we set up all kinds of other things to distinguish each other. For example, we set up certain theological beliefs. And I can't tell you how many times I've had this happen, and I'm just weary of it, but it happens, that somebody has a different theological belief from me and says, "Well, you can't really be a Christian and believe that." Who are you to say I can't be a Christian? Because that belief that we have differs. You believe one way, and I believe another way. And they carry that outside, even in the politics. When I was on the staff at La Jolla Presbyterian Church, I had a man who wanted to teach a class on Christians getting involved in politics. I thought, "That's a good idea." Until he said to me, "Well, of course, you realize, though, that a Christian could never vote for a Democrat." Oh, really? I just, I choke. I choke on those kinds of things. They are so distressing. Well, I don't want to get simplistic about it either because we know that there are false prophets. And I'm not, false prophets. And I'm not saying that you just have to accept everything about everybody else's being right. That's not the point. Jesus made it clear that there are false prophets. He said, "Not everybody that says, 'Lord, Lord,' is going to go into the kingdom of heaven, but he that does the will of my Father, who is in heaven." In other words, and you see this in the Old Testament also, the prophets railed against false prophets. The prophet said, "Thus saith the Lord." But it turns out, the false prophets also said, "Thus saith the Lord." So they all talked with this holy language, but some of them were false. Well, where does that leave us? Leaves us in a challenging kind of situation. Where do we go from here? Let me draw a number of conclusions. First of all, we are a growing but still flawed group of people who are not infallible in our judgments. We have to accept that for ourselves as well as for everybody else. I mean, you don't, you don't have any trouble thinking that other people are flawed, but we have to think of ourselves in the same way. So what Paul has presented here is an ideal toward which we should always strive, but will probably never fully realize. Secondly, Secondly, striving towards the ideal means openness to and respect for people who are differing, different from us, including those who believe different kinds of things and those who worship differently. The third thing is, striving toward the ideal means to me that we err on the side of grace. So if somebody says to me, "Jesus is my Lord", then I will accept that at face value until something happens that seems to be a glaring contradiction. Otherwise, I will accept that, even though the person does disagree with me on various kinds of matters. The fourth thing is, to accept someone then as a fellow Christian does not mean that we have to agree with everything or even approve of everything that that person does. And fifth, as long as we accept someone as a fellow Christian, we should strive to act in a way that reflects the special bond that we have. A long time ago, I read a story that I think illustrates this last part. It was about an American pilot during the Second World War. He got into a dogfight with a German plane, and the German won. The American plane went up in flames, the pilot parachuted out. And as he started down, he could see the German making a U-turn to come back toward him. He knew what the German was going to do. He was going to machine gun him, kill him, before he ever hit the ground. Thinking his life was over, he put his hands together in prayer and bowed his head and committed himself to his Lord. And then he looked up, and as he did, he saw the German fly by with a smile on his face, his hands form of a prayer. The German was saying, "Whatever our nations have against each other, you and I are one in Christ. It can happen." God's amazing grace triumphed over human hostilities. It can happen, let's make it happen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.